For attendees to address the council on any city-related item that is not already listed on tonight's agenda. Also, now that it's election season, please refrain from any comments on political campaigns or ballot measures. If you wish to speak, please line up at the podium, or if participating by Zoom, please raise your hand and wait to be recognized. We just ask that you state your name for use in the record if you live or work in Bremerton, and you ask that we, you limit your comments to three minutes or less. And I have a timer system, and I always like to say it's nothing personal, but exactly three minutes, I'll, I'll cut you off, and I'll try and give a 15-second warning. All right, yes, we'll start in the room, please go ahead.
Mary Lou Long, longtime resident of Bremerton. Once again, I'm here to show that we really appreciate our nation by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance, trying to encourage our council to do the same, same as I'm doing at the opening of every meeting. With that, if anyone would like to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance with me, you're invited to do so. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Second item on my little list, camping on city property is not allowed by virtue of our Bremerton municipal code. I say keep it on the books. When it was added to keep our streets clean and safe, it was a good thing, a good idea then, and it is a good idea today. It has served our citizens well over many years. If people want to camp, go to a campground or the woods. Why should taxpaying citizens be placed in a dystopian hell by allowing this kind of behavior in our city? It makes no sense. Property values drop with this behavior, safety for our children and our families is in danger, our personal property is being stolen, and our personal peace is taken away. The sick need help, but allowing them to continue these destructive behaviors is uncivilized, possibly immoral. Affordable housing is a totally different subject matter. Conflating the two is illogical. One can support the construction of housing by building codes and regulations to bring new housing available in the city, but this does nothing to get people off the streets if they are not interested in any housing. They do not want affordable housing unless it's free. Will Mayor Wheeler build an affordable cottage in his backyard or an apartment in his basement to house a vagrant at no cost to the occupant? I think not. If it would not, if he would not, then I think most people would not agree with this as a solution to street tents. The only resolution, or the only reasonable use of these options is for family members to use them temporarily for elderly parents and children as they're still getting started in life. What is the root of this situation? Catering to irresponsible and sick individuals that have fallen into a life of drugs and crime does nothing to correct the situation. Drug treatment and mental health reconstruction are needed more than a house. To get them into a mental institution cannot be voluntary because these people are sick and incapable of making a decision that is being controlled by an addiction. Maybe a mental hospital is the only way to even have a chance at saving a life that is so tortured by drug addiction. Unfortunately, President Obama tied treatment as a secondary position to people-
And that's three minutes, thank you very much for your comments.
Pardon me?
And that's three minutes, thank you very much for your comments.
My light didn't change.
I have a timer system right here.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, anybody else for public recognition?
Jane Repelowski, longtime resident, resident here. I disagree with Ms. Long. I actually hope that until we have shelter space available, which we do not have now, that we should just repeal the ordinance for camping, which has been found unconstitutional. Once we have shelter space, then yes, we can guide people into shelters or tell them that they can't camp on public streets. I think a lot of people have the misconception that everybody living out on the streets are suffering from drug addiction. There's a lot of people with mental illness problems, and some of them started using drugs because they had no hope living in a tent on the street. So I would hope that until we get real shelter space and portable public toilets downtown, that we just repeal the ordinance that is on the books right now. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I got the thought that to continue to say the same thing, to do, use the same strategies and expect something different was not useful. So today I've brought a visual aid. I think everyone has read the letter where you were reminded that there are people on MLK Way who are collecting human waste in a container like this one and disposing of There is also a letter that I think the mayor CC'd you on, and it was in response to some of us who are doing some of the grassroots work to try to, at minimum, get sanitary facilities available for people on that street. My concern right now is that we are about to amend the ordinance because we need to have a way that we can move those people from this place where we don't want them to be. We don't have a legal way to do it right now. So amending the ordinance, according to the mayor, he feels as though we may be not able to let them stay there because of their proximity to the Marvin Williams Center. I cannot believe that the Marvin Williams Center, though I understand the concern for everyone, the children, the people who use the center, and the people who are living unhoused on the street. I believe that the Marvin Williams Center folks are concerned for everyone, but I also believe that they would be thinking in terms of what would Jesus do? And Jesus would not be using the little children in order to be the excuse for pushing away the most vulnerable people in our community. I have asked that we prioritize this over the ordinance because we've been working on this for eight months, and we have the funding for it. The answer continues to be that we have a liability issue. I think we need to work through that problem and find an answer, and that we do not relocate anyone or push anyone away until a permitted campground area has been discovered. I appreciate your work to try and go in that direction, but please, let's not move people out of there according to a new amended ordinance until we have the campground available. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Don Michelle Wilson. Hello, everybody. Some of you may have seen the article. It came out in the Kids Up Sun yesterday, Rock the Block. Six organizations, New Day, New Life, Gather Together, Grow Together, Their Voice, God's Broken Home University, and Socks Box have come together to try to do something, anything. I, I, I would often get angry at agencies, other people get angry at agencies, but having worked for the state and the county, I understand policy and procedure. I understand liability and insurance and the red tape that comes with it. The good news is that we don't have those things as nonprofits, so we can get down there and we can help them. But I'm going to give you an example. On Monday, while we were rocking the block, because that's our goal, we're going to rock the block, and we're just going to take the street back, one person at a time, we're going to get them housed, we're going to, when somebody says to me, "Don Michelle, I want to go to detox, I'm done," I'm like, "Get in my car, get in the car, I'll take you right now, because I don't have that red tape." I can transport people. I had a gentleman, for 10 years, I've been trying to breathe life and hope into him, "Come on, let's go, let's get off these streets, too old to be out here." On Monday, he saw me, hasn't seen me in a long time, took one look at me, burst into tears and said, "I'm done, I'm ready, get me out of here," right? All right. I called the agencies that we have to walk through to get him to the places he needs to go, to end a Kids Up Rescue mission, you know, I can't just drive him up there and drop him off, it doesn't work like that. They have been down there, and of course, I'm following through every day. He's still down there right now, I just left him. He's in tears and he's losing hope. He has been packed up and ready to go since Monday afternoon at 2:00. I'm about ready to go get him and put him in a tent in my backyard. That window of opportunity that we can help people is limited, and because of the red tape policy and procedure, I can't call those agencies and say, "Hey, what's going on?" Because the HIPAA, they can't talk to me about it. The other thing that I want to address is a porta potty. Again, I understand liability, insurance, policy, procedure, but we're fine in a way. We reached out to the Salvation Army, said, "Hey, can we try a test in one of your parking stalls for two weeks and see how it goes?" They're on board for that. Can we, you know, we're all racking each other's brains, can we get together and maybe the $10,000, because, because we all know the problems that come with a porta potty, right? We know, we've tried it before. So can we address the city council and ask them if we could take that $10,000? If Jim Adrian is willing to pay for a porta potty, can we take the $10,000 and pay for security so that we don't have issues? You know, we're just trying to do something, anything. And all I would ask is that we have your guys' support. That's all we really need. We need the support of the community to do what we can do, which is grassroots on the ground level. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your comments. Keep going, you're in the room.
Hi, I'm Joslyn, I'm from East Bremerton or West Bremerton, depending upon where I'm at. You know, I, I think, you know, as we're talking about the different camping ordinances, I think we're taking, we're looking at two different things. What, what's happening down on MLK is not camping, is surviving, and that's all they're trying to do. And when you're a human, there are certain things that you just have to do. I mean, the bare minimum of anything, and that's eating, that's using the restroom, right? And that's having liquids. And that's really, I mean, if we want to go to, we can do security as well, but, but, but I think that we're, we're taken away, we cannot continue to, to, we're comparing apples and oranges right now. We're comparing somebody's aesthetic beauty, their property rights, to someone just trying to survive. And that's what's happening down there. We've been on the Bremerton Prayer Walk, we've been doing this for three years, and one of the things that we've started to see now is that with the more individuals, you know, Don Michelle was just talking about how we're going down there, and we have a presence down there every day now between these different organizations. And between these different organizations, we're still in there breathing life, and we're breathing hope into these individuals who, on some occasions, don't have anyone else. It would be great if we had family members that could take care of individuals going through treatment, but the fact of the matter is, they have no one, and that's why they find themselves down there on the streets. And so as a community, as Bremerton, I think one of the things that makes this community, and I've lived in a lot of communities, and I never want to go anywhere else, because one of the things that makes Bremerton so incredible is that the, the community that rallies behind everyone and gives other individuals hope. You know, I, I say to my children all the time, I say, "If you're not going to help me, at least don't hinder what I'm trying to do." And that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking this, this, this commission not to do, right? This council, don't hinder what is trying to, because we, as the grassroots, we get it, we don't have the red tape, we don't have to answer to anyone except for God, and we can go down there and we can use different methods in order to reach individuals who maybe have not been reached by anyone else yet, who hasn't been shown this over-aggressive love that, that, that we're able to do, that a lot of agencies are not able to do because their hands are tied. And so I would really encourage this, this council, as Don Michelle was saying, let us get some security down there for the porta potty, because as we're seeing, once we start treating individuals better, once we start showing them the hope that all of us have, they start getting it, and I call it the slippery slope of hope, because once they grasp it, other individuals will grasp it, and pretty soon, we won't be able to stop the hope down there. It will just keep going and going and going, and we won't know what to do with all the goodness coming out of the streets. So it's pretty awesome, and I would just encourage you guys, you can't make an ordinance constitutional by amending it. All of the different places that you guys are looking at, all of the different cities and councils and stuff, they're still going to court for them, so thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Do one more in person here, and then we'll go online. Yes, please go ahead.
Mayor Wheeler, City Council, my name is Jay Langivier. I'm a seven-year veteran here, I live down on MLK. If any of you need to have any questions to answer, you can come to me directly anytime. I know the women that have been spoke, that have been speaking here prior, how many of you drove up to MLK on your way to work today, or at the meeting? At least one or two of you do, I think, anyway, it's a, homelessness is not new. Salvation Army was founded in 1742 in England. This is not a new issue, and we've covered this in the council meetings before, right? I mean, it's not, but I'm not going to kid you, we have 37 tents today, I counted them. That's a lot. Are there drugs? Yeah, there is. Is the solace down there? No, no, I don't use them. I'm not a perfect citizen, but I, I, I have made some great strides with Public Works, Chair of Mayor Wheeler, that I have. I get garbage picked up weekly now, more if I need it. I go right through Hillary Hamilton, and they will come out the same day if I need it. I, they have a nickname for me, they call me the mayor down there. I don't approve of, nor do I condone any type of theft or open drug use, that's why the tents are good, okay? Keeps them out of sight. But they are, it's, 37 is a lot, it's going over to South Court, it's going into the streets, it's, and I'm frustrated by it. I can usually motivate them pretty well, but I've got over 50 people down there. Porta potties won't work, we've done it before. The reason is, they have a four-inch collection tube. The rigs that they use, syringes if you will, are five and a half inches long, they get clogged in the tube, and they will charge you up the yin yang, because they can't, they just got to manually clear it, and it won't work. That's the standard of industry, they won't, there's no other sized tube that they use. You can try it, security's not a very good thing, I mean, I'm a citizen, and I have the same rights as everybody else, and I don't want them watching when I go to the bathroom and when I come and go. I don't. I'm sorry, I don't. Just you have bathroom gear, by the way, if we can send them up here, no. I make great strides in influencing the people, how I believe, it's, I believe them to be accountable for what they are, and treat it like it's their own backyard, and that's how I got them involved in cleaning up the messes that they have down there. Really, it's clean down there, if you, if you look at years past, right? Given the people that we have down there, over 50 people in one little stretch there, that's more than they have in South Court renting apartments there now. Anyway, I wanted to make myself available to any of you, or Mayor Wheeler, I'm on Facebook as Jay Beer, or I can come by your office if you have any questions, and if you have any thrusts of things you want to accomplish, whether it be Rock the Block, or, or you just want a heads up on what's going on down there, you can call me directly, or get a hold of them. Anyway, thank you for your time, sirs.
Thank, thank you for your comments. All right, let's go online to Jim Klein next.
Hi, good evening, Council, this is Jim Klein, I'm the Vice President of the wonderful Charleston Business Association. You can see tonight, once again, when people attend the council meetings and they participate, and they have things that they believe in, great things can happen. It's just another wonderful thing to welcome James, Dr. James Crawford. That sounds like a renewal of the wonderful Bremerton School District that I went to and graduated from. We look forward to, to more great things in our partnership between the Charleston Business Association and schools. With that, I know that there's lots of challenges in Bremerton, but let's balance it out, and let's talk about some of the great things. Right now, everything's coming up roses down on Calo, and not just roses, but other flowers. We're just so fortunate that our councilperson, Michael Goodnow, and Council President Jeff Coughlin, we have absolute supporters, along with the rest of the council, Denise Frey, and I've learned a lot from Anna Mokler on the new planters that we have had repurposed from the Minette Project over to Calo. And it just shows that with the help of Public Works and the Parks Department, and Mayor Wheeler, and all of you, that, that we can beautify Bremerton, that's just a part of making Bremerton a great place to live, but it's a positive part. And again, it shows, just like all of the people who are concerned about the homeless population, that when you have a vision and you have people who participate, you can make the change. The merchants down on Calo, and there's so much happening, we've got First Friday coming up, but the merchants like Miranda Pernero at Cafe Corvo, and of course, Fleamasters at the Unique Experience, and the, the planters are all going to be taken ownership of by the merchants. Just want to tell you that you're going to see more great things in Calo, we appreciate your help, and look forward to furthering that relationship. And Michael, I don't know how you did it, we were supposed to have those delivered on Friday, but they were already delivered, so spectacular job, I owe you a cup of coffee at Cafe Corvo. So, Council, thank you for all you've done, to all the members out there that are in attendance in person, you can make a difference, don't give up, keep fighting for what you believe in, and we're going to make Bremerton not just a great town, but the best town in the United States. Love you all, and thank you, and good night.
Thank you for your comments. All right, let's go next online again to Molly Brooks. If you can hear us, Ms. Brooks, please go ahead. You can hear us, we can't hear you yet, we'll give it another few seconds, and we can always circle back, it's not working. All right, I'll tell you what, why don't we go on to, it looks like Joy H. We'll come back to Molly. Yeah, let's go to, unless you can hear us, Ms. Brooks. Nope, still nothing, okay, yeah, let's go to Joy there.
Hello, my name is Joey Hayes, I'm a member of Kitsap E-Race, I've been paying very close attention to this discussion, including coming to the study sessions. I think I now also know quite a lot about the Warren Avenue Bridge from going to the last two study sessions. I have been heartened to hear the amount of concern coming from the council about making sure that we have someplace people can go. If I had my way, there would be no camping, anti-camping ordinance, but I'm so happy to have heard that most of the conversation about this ordinance has actually gone to where we can safely put people while we're working to find them housing. And I really think that we can really do some good there. And then, of course, I think we all know shelters don't solve homelessness, so we need to be able to build up our whole infrastructure with more case management, more affordable housing units. And there are people in Bremerton doing this work and willing to do it, we just need more funding, and probably also more people helping along with us. And I really hope that this conversation about where to safely house people when they're in transition, be it a sanctioned encampment or another emergency shelter, I think that's really a step in the right direction, but we can't stop at just that. We have to follow through into supporting people moving into and staying in safe housing that is acceptable, more than acceptable, safe, comfortable for human habitation. We may all have different opinions, but I would like to think that nobody wants to see anybody having to live in a tent. And I hope that, as a community, and I love this community, that we can come together to create some great, long-term solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's go on to Marwan Cameron.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and everyone in attendance. I appreciate the time. My name is Marwan Cameron, gather together, grow together. You've heard from many of my teammates this evening speak on behalf of the unhoused downtown and on MLK, and how important that is. I want to acknowledge Councilman Younger and his words, and his advocacy, and his humanistic viewpoint in that dialogue last week at the study session, that was very much appreciated. For the gentleman, just kind of reacting to the other two gentlemen that spoke, you know, there are bathrooms there that every one of you can go and walk into right now and use, and everyone should have a restroom, and just because something is expensive or not cost-effective doesn't mean that we should not do it. If we want Bremerton to be the best city in the world, in the country, then that means that we are taking care of those that need it the most. We can see how much that has grown exponentially down on MLK, and it's not just MLK, but this is the focus this evening. But if you look at Philly, if you look at Cali, if you look at New York and other cities, that's the direction that we're headed. And so we have to have the desire, the political will, we the people, to do something different. This is City Council, this is the mayor. We need to create the solution, and I'm pressing upon you to please create the solution. So many of us are ready and already doing the work to pitch in and make it successful. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next, let's go to Justin Gurley, and then we'll try and circle back to Molly Brooks.
Hi, my name is Justin Gurley, I live in Minette. I would like to urge the council to remove and get rid of the camping ordinance, it is unconstitutional, it should just be out of the books tonight. It, it should be done with, there shouldn't be studies, unconstitutional, we should not criminalize homelessness. Need to have solutions and compassion towards these people, and there are ways that we don't have to look towards other cities, because we, as the city, can come up with these solutions. And to do it quickly, we can look at already hotels and everything that are just sitting empty rooms, and get those filled, and find out the capacity, that, find out the capacity of homes that are just empty, that are sitting there as Airbnbs, and looking at that, and getting rid of that type of, of housing solutions for profit before taking care of our homelessness. And that's really what it comes down to, is that we would rather keep these units open to make profit for other people by extracting and leaving our city. And I feel that we should really look at the inventory of that, along with all the other solutions that everybody else has set. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Let's try going back to Molly Brooks. Okay, well, Ms. Brooks, if you can hear us, just hold on one second. There we go, Ms. Brooks, you should be able to speak now.
Hi, my name is Molly Brooks, I'm a member of Kitsap Race Coalition's Housing and Homelessness Team. I would like to thank all of you for the time you've been taking to discuss the issue of the homeless encampment on MLK Way. Please create a place for unhoused neighbors to move, if, to move, either a dedicated camping location, or a tiny house village, or something of the sort, a place where they can keep their belongings and not have to move them, where they will have sanitary facilities. Please-
Please also take their transportation to services into consideration once they have been moved. I also urge you to do everything you can to increase shelter beds in our community so that we can get people off the streets. Everyone deserves a place, a safe place to sleep and to keep their belongings and access to sanitary facilities. And after that, please, we want to move people out of shelters after that, find, you know, further housing, further housing solutions so that we can work people into more permanent solutions. I, of course, want to keep in mind both the people living in the encampment and the people who live on MLK Way and the Marvin Williams Center. We know they need relief too. Just, and yeah. Thank you for the time you've been taking to discuss this and and for the fact, fact that, and for the consideration you've given. And please just do what you can to actually find someplace for them to go so that they have a a better quality of living than what's going on right now for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else for public recognition? We'll go here in the room.
Hello, I am Erin Hale, the Executive Director of the Downtown Bremerton Association. I first want to mention, no one deserves to be on, to be homeless and be on the streets, but why are any of our vets on the streets? I am very honored to work in partnership with many of the people here today, and I'm just building this coalition for Main Street and downtown revitalization. I just met with Dr. Terry Cox, the interim dean of OC, and I'm thrilled to invite her to the downtown space. She's from Kingston. She's not as familiar with downtown. But she was excited by all of the ideas that we have and all the ways in which we can work with various departments within OC. And in fact, they have programs that help transition, anyone in transition from the streets through, that go through rehab or whatever their, their situation is, to find better education and employment. And I would love to help be a part of that bridge building between KCR, OC, all of these organizations that have an amazing amount of resources for our unhoused population. So we, there's so much that's going on this weekend. I just want to share that the West Sound Film Festival happens on Friday through Sunday. Taste of Kitsap and Rock the Dock gets kicked off on Friday. Taste of Kitsap goes Friday through Saturday. And the Kitsap Wine Festival is on Saturday as well. Bremerton First Friday is Friday. Our downtown is so activated and alive, and it's really fun to hear so much commentary outside of Bremerton about what we're doing. I'm very excited to share that the Admiral Theater, through the work with Nate Murphy, has opened opportunities to our local restaurants. We, in exchange for gift cards, they're going to be advertising. We have, of course, Anthony's Remedy and Evergreen Pizza on the list, and we're reaching out to even more restaurants. So it's really exciting to work with a large entity like the Admiral and, and really get them involved with the downtown space. We just met with Kathy Garcia at the courts and we're really excited that there are still opportunities to work with the cruise ship passengers. We're going to see if we can create a makers fair where people coming off on Fridays are greeted with all of our amazing artisans right there on the dock. So more on that later. And Revitalize Washington is in October, and we have four people going to, to represent Bremerton. And I can't tell you how humongous this is, not just because there are so many incredible sessions and it's nice to kind of divvy up the, the educational opportunities, but it's incredible that all of you have buy-in to what we're trying to do right now. So I just want to thank you so much, and I want you to know that Bremerton is being seen. So thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Anyone else for public recognition? Making sure no one else is online? All right, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close public